All right, call the meeting to order. Do a roll call. Oh, you want me to call the roll call?
Sure.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Lori gave you a little speech about what I would do today.
Don't get any engineer, should I be doing that?
Keith Olgood is absent. Tony Campbell?
Here.
Tom Cullen?
Here.
Annie Ann Ferguson?
Here.
Chuck Slater?
Here.
Donna Boggs is absent. Gary Corlou?
Here.
Tony Gross?
Here.
And Mike Patnout, I'm here. Okay, we also have Debbie Finch is not here. Okay. Lori, are you in her place? Martha Brooke Perry?
Here.
Yes, and Jay Easter?
Here.
A non-voting step. All right, we have a forum. So, I was not here this appearance of the last meeting. And it says here, there's a rezon request from R1 to R3. That's our agenda for today. And I see a couple of things. I see there's a letter here from Joshua Lyon as well as a letter from Lowe's and Associates, dated June 17th, addressed to you. And a letter from Clover Engineering Services, which is the Joshua Lyon letter, is dated June 23rd. So, at this time, do you want to go ahead? Oh, we have Keith Olgood. Keith Olgood's here. We're just starting. So, did you want to go ahead and begin? I understand there was discussion at the last meeting. I wasn't here. I can read in these letters, you know, some things. But did you want to just kind of stay where you are at this point in time?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to say a few things. You know, the last meeting we were at, you know, I think a lot of people know that Mr. Easter recommended R3 PUD, which I didn't, to be truthful, I didn't know a whole lot about it. But that next day, I got an earful, talked to some people I know, building business, talked to two engineers, and they all, they always told me that it was a mistake. It first started off, you know, I've never told the city that I was going to build out there, that I was going to design the property to best be suited for future building, maybe a condo or apartments. And so, I consulted with my engineer, Mr. Lyons, and we come up, this is a drawing we come up with. And after we did that, you know, we come back, you know, there's two things that I had to get. I had to get a good drawing and to satisfy the city, and I had to get an okay from Tennessee, which is T-D-A. And I got both of those approvals. And both of them got compliments from Mr. Lyons on today, and also the drawings that you all have from Mr. Chandler, who did the survey. And just about everybody I talked to, they were totally against, you know, the going with PUD because they're saying that if we go that, we're locked in. It's, I got a, there's one engineer go meet, a friend of mine, said, "Roy, you're correct on PUD. Any buyer would be tied to whatever layout you submitted and was approved. They would also have to go through a long process of admitting PUD before they could proceed with any other layout or different density. It's simple, R3 would keep all options open." This property, and all of y'all know it from Kings and Springs, is, it's got a, let me just read one paragraph from Josh. "In my understanding, the council's biggest concern of this approving this zone is someone come back in the future and ask for a bunch of something, put a lot of apartments on there. Well, everybody I've consulted with, it's impossible. You only have so much land there that's buildable." And he said, "In my professional opinion, this would be nearly impossible, as depicted in the steep slopes and rear, five and a half acres of the rear, the rear property there, only two acres that you can build on. Three and a half acres is complete bluff. Now, the other, you got the other parcel is three acres." And he is saying there, you got a half acre on that property, it's so steep, it's impossible to build on. As you can see with our drawing, you see how much of it's bluff. I consulted with, like I say, with one engineer, two builders, and one general contractor. And I asked him, I got to talk to him about it, and said, "Yes, they felt it was a mistake." And one person says, "It's very evident that Mr. Easter did not look at your plans before he came before the council." And he said, "He could see on that, if you had eight and a half acres that are completely flat, I guess you could put a massive amount." But everyone is saying that, so after that, and I said, "Well, maybe it's a possibility I could consult with Mr. Easter." I wrote Mr. Easter three times, emails, not one reply. And so, I'm coming to council and saying, "Look, if you'll make it R3, I will do right. Everything I've ever done in properties, I have properties in Nashville, I've done everything right. I was on Charlotte Avenue 34 years, I'm a MacPherson motor, so if I know of it, I had the best looking dealership in West Nashville. That's the way I do everything. If you'll do it R3, I'll make the place look like a golf course. If you go with R1, I'll still do the same."
I just want to ask a question so I can understand. When you said, "If we went R3, you will do right," but you said, "You don't intend to build, you want to prepare it to sell."
I don't, I don't know, no, it's not that.
So, when you say you'll do right, what, I just want to understand what you mean.
Well, I'll do, I'll do right. What I'm saying is, because I put that, I said, "If you do it R1," I'm not saying that if you don't do it, you give it R1, that I'm going to retaliate or something. If you make it R1, and you say, "Look, I'm not going to make it R3 now," I'll still make it nice. That's the way I do things.
Okay. Okay, and so, did you have anything else? Because what I want to do is ask Jay to talk about his recommendation.
Okay.
Unless you have something else.
I don't have that.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, can you go ahead and just explain, your recommendation, why you recommended that?
Well, first, being clear on what is, this is a rezon. You're right, it's not a site plan approval. You're not approving this site plan. And the approval he, that McPherson got on his site plan for the swift was strictly for grading. He did not approve this site plan or entitle this site plan in any way. The site plan is generated to produce a grading plan so that he can begin grading his property. And even if, even if we, the commission chooses to recommend to the council to approve the R3 zoning, he will still have to go through a site plan approval process for the actual site plan.
If we, if we went with an R3 zoning?
If, if, if this commission, which is only a recommending body to city council, even if he gets an approval order denied tonight, it still goes to council.
Right.
If this commission chooses to recommend R3 or deny R3, it doesn't matter, whatever he does, the site plan has to come back. So, the recommendation that I gave last, last time we made, because Mr. McPherson said this is what he wants to build, or this is what he's proposing to build, and he's only going to put 40 units on the property, the only way to, and if the commission was comfortable with that, the only way to do that is through a PUD. If we, if you zone it straight R3, then the property is entitled to have up to 15 units to the acre. Doesn't have to be this configuration, it can be a different configuration. The property is steep, it has extreme slopes. I did look at Mr. McPherson's site plan, whether his consultants believe me that I looked at it or not. The site plan is really not in question. What is in question is the density and the entitlements and the use. Because the density he is proposing is significantly less than R3 lacks. The only reason he had to have R3 to do a development such as this that he has proposed is because of the use, because the buildings have four units. Your R2 zoning, which is still allows more than what Mr. McPherson is proposing, only allows up to duplexes, doesn't allow units with more than, more than a duplex. So, that's why he would need the R3. And here, I did bring these, and these are put into a little context, and I got, Mr. McPherson can have them too. It just shows the property within the existing zonings and around it. The commission asked last time, what was around it as part of zoning, the TOPO, and land. I got some more, just paid one. Call it, still take one and pass it back. So, Mr. McPherson has chosen not to go with the PUD, which is fine. So, what is by force denied is a straight zoning of the property to R3. And he has 8.21 acres, and you can see on the map, this was taken from the Chatham County GIS site, which had the zoning on the site listed. So, his property is identified in yellow. He's adjacent to R2 zoning. There's R3 zoning across the street. And then, on the other side of this property is all zoned R1, and he has C1 down along the road. If you flip to the next page, that shows the, what the Chatham County website has as TOPO, and he had the more detailed TOPO of his site. But there was a question last time about wanting to see the surrounding TOPO of the property. So, this just gives a very rough idea from the Chatham County website of what the other property surrounding the source lot is. If you flip to the next one, that's your current adopted land use plan. Now, I've got a blow up of it on the last page, which shows Mr. McPherson's property is all yellow, which is your low-density residential classification. That's the very last option. And if you compare it to the, your land use plan to the existing zoning that's around it, all of this was at one time R1. Over the course of time, the property has been rezoned, the land use plan has not been updated, but there have been zoning changes in the surrounding area, like Mr. McPherson is requesting, that don't necessarily comply with your land use plan. The land use plan's not been updated to show the R2 zoning and the R3 zoning across the But as his request stands denied, he's asking for an R3 rezoning of his property, which is in conflict with your approved land use plan. So, it's kind of up to the commission to decide on what its recommendation to council to approve.
Okay. I would like to just make sure I'm caught up to where we are in the deal, because there's a lot of information going around, and I'm a little slow. So, I just want to catch up. So, first of all, Mr. McPherson, I understand your request is not necessarily to build, as I wrote down when you started talking, but to prepare the land. Maybe you would build on it, but maybe you would not. Is that right?
Yeah. The reason, you know, as you can see, it's so much bluff there, and so little buildable land.
I understand, I understand what you're talking about, about the contours of the land.
Right.
But I just want to clarify, you're doing this to get an R3 zoning, not necessarily to build yourself. I'm just trying to find out what the information is I'm hearing. Is that pretty much what you stated? And then, there was more about the bluffs and what they would restrict and what was available.
Right. Well, what the engineer told me when we consulted, he said, "What, to make value to the property, you need, when you design it, when you bring in dirt and rock, you want to design it for if, when someone does build in the future, or if I build in the future, that it'd be more feasible." Other words, I wouldn't be just like running a bulldozer, just smoothing things out. Other words, it would have a design to it.
Yeah, there would be a design and an intention.
Right. And if someone was interested, the places would be already there, the roads would be cut.
Right. And I understand that. And, and then, I understand that the art, even though what you presented is relatively low density, the picture that you show.
You can't put anything else.
Well, is that, would you agree you can't put any more than this on there?
Once the zonings change, theoretically, when it's outside, say, it was outside of your hands, we can't guarantee what, say, another owner might do with it, I think is our issue. So, even if you prepared it all the way, you just never know what people are going to do.
And they could go, uh?
And they could just go, you know.
Go where? Where would you go?
Can they go where?
Could you, if you build an elevator company back there, you're good? That's the only thing, if people familiar, that's a straight bluff. You fell off it, you would die.
You could build more than two floors.
You could build a multiple level apartment complex.
Well, and so, what I understand from Mr. Easter again is, by us giving up the R1, which is how the development right now is planned in our town, we wouldn't be giving that up if we agreed to an R3 zoning.
You know, we're giving up control of the character of that part of our town. And if there was a PUD, and correct me if I'm wrong, then there's a much more negotiated understanding of what that would look like if it's.
Are you saying it's a possibility, something can be built on that block?
No.
I have no idea.
Within the context of your building, obviously, you don't have a site plan that we're attempting to approve. You have a zoning issue, which you're not, you're not binding yourself to actually build on, that you're going to possibly prepare for someone else to build on.
What's a possibility that I could do?
Right, but you've given us your reassurance and all, that you're going to do right by us and by this town, and everything you've done is nice, but you can't guarantee that with someone else that you sell it to. Although, you could put stipulations on it. And what they're saying is, if we rezon it for R3, evidently, we, they can build up higher, as far as not on the actual land, but they can build units up and apartment complexes.
Two or three story units.
No, just on the same, on the same area that you have, but just a multiple.
It's just like, like my engineer saying, you still have to have two parking places for every unit, every unit. If the unit is so large, you have to have more parking spaces. The property is impossible.
Mr. McPherson, when I left this meeting last week, or whatever, I thought we were, you were going to come back with a PUD. And I'm going to tell you, by vote, that I'm not going to vote for a recommendation of this R3. I think a PUD gives everybody an opportunity for input on what happens on that piece of land when it comes time to build it.
Not that we don't agree that you would be right by it, but if you were to sell it to someone else, they're not bound. They didn't come before us and say, "Hey, I promise this is what I'm going to do." They're just someone that bought the land from you, and we can't control what they do. I think at that point is where our concern is at.
And it gives us, it gives us a planning commission more input in the whole process because we would sit down with whoever develops and talk through, here's, if you'll do this, we'll do this, that kind of thing. You just got, I personally think it's a good way to do business, and it protects the interest of the town. And that is one member of this board. His one under one interest is protecting the interests of the town.
It's still, you know, it was aggravating when I tried to contact Mr. Easter, and he wouldn't get there with me, and, you know, and to talk with me, and I don't know, I just felt that that was the time to do it. From that meeting and this meeting, we could talk, but, you know.
I was told within a couple of days afterwards, you said you weren't going to do a PUD, and insist on an R3.
Well, if I, if I consulted with him, it's possible I could have gone somewhere else. But, I mean, you all have to do the best you can, what do you think, Chris?
Is there anything else, Mr. McPherson, that you wanted to add before we? I appreciate you all listening, Jay.
Can I ask, Martha Brooke, that talked to us about the problem, the confidence that you said.
I think y'all have very fairly summarized. It's, while it may be restrictive upon any potential builder in the future, or third party that he sells the property to, you're exactly right, it affords the town the opportunity to negotiate, and using your word, negotiate what this property is going to look like. I would take Mr. McPherson as word, as to what he finds on building on the property. But as you're saying, if he indicates he's going to be selling it, and you get a third party in there, and without some kind of pre-approved plan as to what's built on there, you're exactly right, you would lose control of that.
And just, just for clarification for everyone, once again, what would be all the potential things that could fall under an R3 zoning? Just so we're clear on that.
Well, I've got the uses here in front of y'all, if you'll just permit me to read it. Obviously, you have the single detached dwelling, prefabricated dwelling, duplexes, multifamily dwelling, which is your apartment buildings, boarding and rooming houses, accessory buildings that go along that, install home occupation, and then, under special exceptions, you also get into utility services, mobile home parts, zero lot line dwellings, bed and breakfast home residences.
And I think that's why, your plan that you gave us here, I think it's a great plan. I think it looks great. And if there were four of these units that you laid out, I think that'd be a fantastic thing for the town. But my problem is, if we just do a straight rezon, there's that potential of a lot of things.
What you want to do can be done in a PUD.
But is there no way to okay R3 and then to lock it in by vote? Because they're saying so many units, you gave me more than 40 units, there's no way to do that?
There's no way, because that requires change in the zoning.
Right. You would have to actually.
An definition of the zoning, so.
To lock it in for this particular piece of property, as far as what can be done on that property, it has to be done through the PUD overlay. Because what we're doing, if we were to say, "We're going to give you R3," and what that entitles, that piece of property, because it goes with the property, it doesn't go with the owner, it goes with property, that entitles that piece of property to be developed in accordance with what we allow in an R3, which is all those things I just listed. So, if something should happen to you, you sell the property, or you're no longer around, then whoever the owner is of that piece of property, the time they're ready to develop it, it's then an open board for them. They can pull up on our book and see every single use we possibly can put on that piece of property and build any of those. Whereas, with your idea, that the commission seems to really like, we would, we would be able to control that it would be developed in accordance with what your idea is and what you have put on a site plan, but we have to have that as a PUD overlay. And the commission says, "Okay, we approve this as Mr. McPherson is telling us that he's going to build on."
But I just want to assure the council that I'll, when it's finished, it'll look good. At least R1.
Can I ask a question? If we approved, Mr. McPherson came in for, we thought, at least I thought we were about to agree to a R3 PUD that allowed him to build 32 units. Now, if we approved an R3 PUD with the contingency that no more than 40 units would be built there, is that possible?
I'm sorry, I couldn't handle that.
And change that 32 units to 40 units, no more than 40 units of this property?
Amount.
And still make it as an R3 PUD?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that would be within the limits, yes.
So, in theory, then, if you did that, you give him the 40 units that his engineers says is maximum, and you give the town the ability to control what's going.
But at this point, we don't have a PUD to approve, right? I mean, that's, that's.
Correct.
Yeah, we agree, because with the PUD, you'd have to present site plans that have a lot more detail added into them, and that's, that's what we would need over the state board.
Well, we were fairly close last week.
I thought we were.
So, all we had to do was add two more, or two, four units buildings to that site, which his engineer indicated might be.
But I think there was some other matters that we're going to ask for.
There was some additional information to make the documents comply with the PUD ordinance. And I communicated those to Mr. McPherson. And then, within a couple of days, got a response, and we were coming back to the R3 straight up.
No, I'm just looking for a possible way to get around the problem, because I suspect that R3 will be rejected.
It would've been nice if you had called me, or contacted me, emailed, anything. I would've gone to your office, whatever, and you say, "Look, this is the way it's got to be." And if someone had told me this, and because I was aware, I apologize to the council, because I'm not any property I've ever done, I've never done an R with a PUD. And, but if you're a planner, you know, I'm very diss, I'm dissatisfied, I don't know about you all, but if he would've contacted me, I gave him my phone number, he had my email, he knew how to call me, and consulted with me, and told me, said, "Now, look, this is how the PUD works," and made some kind of demand, or said, "Look, let's try to work together." I would've done something. I would've gotten in with my engineer, and tonight, we'd have had something. Everybody was aware. I'm sending everybody, I'm trying to keep everybody updated, trying to keep Mr. Easter updated.
Okay, I hear you, Mr. McPherson. So, Mr. Easter, this letter here, does it say everything that Mr. McPherson needs to do? So, you have this letter dated June 17th, tells you everything you would've had to have if you were to live, right? So, this is a letter, June 17th, to you?
Yeah, it was, and I wrote him back.
But, I mean, but you have this, so you do know everything you need for the PUD, is that?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. He sent that, and I, and that's the last time I've heard from Mr. Easter.
Mr. McPherson, all my communication has to come through the city, unless I'm directed by the city.
Well, did you, did you tell someone with the city you got to contact Mr. McPherson?
Your communication, the city was calling.
Did you call anyone with the city?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
And you told them what?
Okay, I would like to focus on the conduct of the meeting, which is really what we're going to recommend, and this is a debate about the shot, John, so I'd like to really pass that and get on with what we want to do. Sorry for being rough, but I'd like us to stay on task.
I want to make a motion, because I, well, let me ask you, we, we have, the only thing, opportunity we have here is either to request the city commission to rezone it to R3 or not.
Correct.
I would like to make the motion that we ask the city commission to recheck the R3 zoning.
And once?
I will second that.
If it's voted down, you reject his request, then he is restricted from bringing this forward, assuming the city commission also rejects it. He will be restricted from bringing forward any rezon request, should he choose to do an R3 PUD later for another year without special permission or exception. So, he would also have the ability, if he wanted to withdraw his request and resubmit it to a later date, without having that restriction tackled.
I don't like that restriction.
Who grants that special?
How do we get past, who could yet?
The planning commission would have to.
We could give him the special permission.
He sent word, I want to have bring this back up. You could by special permission.
So, we can give him the chance to go back and, and.
That would be.
Let him bring it back in.
But I just want to, I want to make sure, more than anything, that he was aware of that.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
In our, in our zoning ordinances, if your request for a rezon has been rejected, then you can't come back at a later date.
One year.
Or within one year.
Okay.
And request it without special permission from the commission or the city council allowing you to bring it back up again. And so, I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of that, as we more specifically use, we were wanting.
In other words, he could come back here next month, the month after.
If we give him special permission.
Would you please reconsider this as a PUD?
He could, yes.
That we could give him permission to.
That's something that would just happen in the course of a meeting, you've requested ahead of time on the agenda, and we give him that permission in the meeting?
Correct. Correct. So, can, would we not vote here at this time, or?
We'll vote.
Unless he withdraws.
We have to vote.
He can withdraw it if you want to.
And then, he could resubmit it after he withdrew.
Correct.
At any time, without our permission or special.
Correct. If he withdraws it, then you're not voting on it, and that restriction doesn't want to play. But if it's still on the floor, we have the.
Does Mr. McPherson understand that?
Right.
So, at this point, if you withdraw the petition for the rezon, then it's like nothing happened, and then you can come back and submit.
I'd like to make a statement to Mr. McPherson. I personally, and I think everybody here wants to work with him and do what's right. The fact that we stumbled throughout this process, I'm sorry, but we did, and it's just way it is.
Well, yeah, and part of the nature of this is we're supposed to do all the work here. So, it's not like we can all go home and, you know, calm day and make a lot of phone calls. So, we're trying to do the work here in the open, and that's why it looks a little messy.
Thanks to state legislature, in fact.
And there's also, I mean, while, while we have, you know, we have something laid out here, there's nothing concrete to really grasp at this point with the rezoning. It's just, you know, we rezon it, it can be done with multiple different things. It's just, you know, we rezone it, it can be done with, multiple different things can be done with it. As it is now, certain things can be done with it. And giving up that rezoning and the ability to dictate a little bit what happens is what we are concerned about.
So if there, is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor.
There was a motion, I missed checking by me.
And that motion was to reject the R3 zoning.
Well, to recommend to the city commission, to reject it.
Correct. Yeah, to the city commission. And then I heard discussion...
And then there was some discussion that if he withdrew, then this would be a moot point at that point, right?
Correct.
So I guess that's kind of a hit, hit, wait, wait.
Is it appropriate then to...
If you'd like to withdraw.
To allow Mr. McPherson to withdraw before we reject it?
If he chooses to.
Yeah, if he chooses, although you can always come back with a request for a special exception.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So is that what you would like to do in the future? Come back with a request for a special exception?
Well, let me, I'll consult with my engineer.
So then at this point, we have a motion on the floor with a second.
So, he's not withdrawing?
He's chosen not to withdraw.
He's chosen not to withdraw.
You could withdraw this request right now.
No, no, I was going to say, yes, I want to withdraw it. I'm going to come back in a second, but I have to consult, you know, that's my draw. I'll go, I'll go tell the engineer.
So are you saying, at this time, you are withdrawing your request?
Yes.
You are withdrawing your request? Okay. So...
Does that mean I can come back in six months?
Whenever, whenever you want.
When you get with the planner and...
Through the city?
Through.
Through the city?
Through the city.
And that would be who, Lori? You, Lori? Okay, so you would work through Lori, and not Jay. You'd start with Lori on what your request would be that you wanted to accomplish. Does that make sense? And that way, we could help this move forward in a way that makes sense to you and the city.
I always draw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
We went through a lot of information, Mr. McPherson. Is there any, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Well, thank you for working through this with us.
Your patience is appreciated.
Yes.
This is my fifth meeting, not meeting, but the council meeting or actual meeting.
I understand.
Okay. Anything else before we adjourn?
Okay, I think at last I can make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right. Okay, easy.
All right. Thank you, Lori.
Jay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Thanks, Scotty.[1796.83]